I'd like to welcome everybody to the Hammond City Council Meeting, November the 11th, 2014, Veterans Day. We'll begin our meeting with a prayer by Councilman Wright and we'll follow that by standing and pledging to the flag. Councilman Wright, will you get a glass, please?
Yes, as Mayor said, this is a special day in our country and I'm sure everyone here in this room's aware of it. Unfortunately, there are those that aren't. It's just another day to them, but it's very special to all of us who are patriotic. Would you bow your head to me? Heavenly Father, today we do honor our veterans, the worthy men and women who gave their best when they were called upon to serve and to protect our country. Father, we pray that you will bless them for their unselfish service and the continual struggle to preserve our freedoms and our safety and our country's heritage for all of us. Bless them abundantly for the hardships they faced, for the sacrifices they've made, for their many different contributions to America's victories over tyranny and oppression. Lord, we respect them, we thank them, we honor them, we're proud of them, and we pray that you'll watch over these special people and bless them with peace and happiness in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation and thy God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Ayler?
Here.
Wayne Best?
Here.
Buddy Holly?
Here.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Here.
Ken Minett?
Here.
Bonnie Wright?
Here.
Include everybody's packets, copies of the minutes from November 4th. Meeting, is there a motion to approve those? Motion by Councilman Holly, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mead. Councilman Holly?
No, sir.
Councilman Mead?
No, sir.
Floor is open for any questions or questions.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ken Minett?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
I saw the bills being passed around. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ayler, second.
Yes.
Second by Councilman May. Councilman Ayler?
Yes, sir.
Councilman May?
No, sir.
Floor is open for question or discussion. Call the roll.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ken Minett?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
This time with your delegations from the audience, if anyone would like to address council, you may do so at this time. If you would stand and state your name and try to limit your comment to three minutes to accommodate somebody else that might like to speak. The number one to old business, Councilman Wright?
No, sir.
Councilman May?
Motion.
I do have one thing. I'll come back around to me and see, but somebody else may get first. Councilman Ayler?
Yes, just a couple of things. I know we had discussed the CDBG grant applying for this year. I kind of wanted to see what her status was. I had talked to Mr. Hounds today about a little bit and just kind of see where we're at on applying for storm drains.
I think we need to do that rather quickly, don't we? I know we were waiting to get a city manager in place to move forward with that. There had been some discussion about using the guy that the company HUB uses for there. With full certainty, the storm drain grant would get approved and HUB has agreed not to apply if we apply. So, I guess we just need to... Is that a 50/50?
No.
Is it 100%?
I think it's 80/20.
Okay.
Half a million dollars, I think, cost HUB 80,000.
Is it a half a million? Is it a half a million dollar cap?
Yes.
That's correct.
Do we need a motion?
I think that would be wise because I think we need to get started on it, like Councilman Best said. And by the way, I mean, half a million dollars won't touch that project, but I get it underway.
Mr. Mayor, I spoke with the gentleman who hasn't been writing the HUB grants this afternoon. It's actually a firm that I have worked with for a number of years, doing CDBG grants as well as some other grants. One possibility would be at one of the upcoming work sessions in the near future, he said that he could come down here and meet with us. He would talk about that program. We also talked about some other programs that might be of benefit to the city. The city, they were not used in recent years or maybe has never utilized. He said he would also review those, talk about what was eligible, what was likely to be funded, and what the various matches would be for each of the programs, including the CDBG.
You need a motion? To move forward with it, that'd be fine. Do you want to make one?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Councilman Wright to authorize the city manager to move forward with pursuing the CDBG grant for storm drain repair. Is that right again? Councilman Wright, floor is yours.
Well, obviously, we have needs and I'm all for Kevin taking the lead on it and bringing someone in to talk to us about what's applicable, but I feel strongly that we should apply.
Councilman Best?
I just echo what Mr. Councilman Wright has said. Appreciate Mr. Hounds giving all that quick. I just, I know what's coming up. We all move quick where it is.
Floor is open.
One other thing, too. You know, in the past, it was easy to do first water system, then for the sewer system, now for the gas system. And I figured it was just a matter of time before the storm service came and your T-Dex heard you and they said, hey, you guys want to do some storms? Well, we've already done it. We've already started with several cities. Tell them, put an E-Dex on, tell them what they're going to spend, when schedules. So, it's just a matter of time to get to it. I'd have a good job, tend to be a gentleman.
Floor is still open.
It'd probably cost that much to have somebody to look at the system and engineer it.
Well, there's no drones.
That's why I'm saying this.
The drones got destroyed in that flood. They used that hard drones and they got destroyed. HUB out there, the lower office, they got destroyed. So, let's go back to the real one. Nobody got them off the thumb, bro.
They were old paper bags, probably 80 years old.
Floor is still open. Do you know when the deadline is? Do you know?
I believe it's in February, but not possible.
Okay. Any more discussion? Call the roll.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ken Minett?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Best. Floor is still yours.
The other thing, I know we've got an auction coming up in the next couple of weeks. And just to, we're getting rid of everything down in the basement. Is there a way we could attach the stuff over in that building to that without changing it? Because I don't think we listed it item for item. And I would know that Mr. Tibb was there. Better thing, there's mold, no circulation in there, no artery thing. And I just, we need to get rid of it before it gets to the point, we just have to go in the garage.
Yeah. I agree.
And we just add that on to the stuff that's coming up the auction next to it.
Does anybody remember how that motion was made? I don't think we ever specified what underneath this building and over there was going to go.
I don't think we did. I could let you know.
Yeah.
You just made a motion to surplus all the stuff in the basement, is what your motion was, if I'm not mistaken. So, we have to find basement. You didn't do any specific items, you just said surplus all the stuff downstairs, move back, just not leaving a motion on that.
The vehicles, we're going to be having at least seven police vehicles, bicycles, got a bunch of bicycles, got some old computers, they got all that stuff down here in the basement. And all this is going to be city stuff, calls us back to the city. And of course, we do, if I will say, can I still have a couple of things out that we talked about? How that building out there?
Yeah, it's still city stuff.
Okay. And it was a couple of things I wanted to gather for you, so.
Are we going to the auction?
Yeah, we can put that in there, but I don't know how, you have to list every night, so.
Well, Assistant Chief and I were talking about doing some groups type stuff, like lots. So, you can do it as a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we could. Assistant Chief and I already discussed that.
What, do we want to just, does somebody want to make a motion to include the stuff that's in the garage? If you let me, and give the department, it's time to go look and see what they want and get it out?
Motion that we get it, let's in the garage to the auction.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Best and second by Councilman Ayler. Councilman Best and, Councilman Ayler?
Just to echo what Councilman Holly was saying, is the papers, I do believe they need to be auctioned as well. I know that quite a few people in the Cornstalk Heights area would like to have an opportunity to purchase those for their own property, so when that auction does come available, I'd like to notify some of those folks.
Floor is open. Motion is to auction off the stuff that's in the three bay garage, minus the truck. Call the roll.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ken Minett?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
Floor is still yours, Councilman Best.
That's all I have.
Councilman Mead?
I'm off the trail, I'll be in a minute, but can you give us an update on what's going on in South Hammond on the road and the fire department? Please. I'm looking that up.
Yeah, I think Kevin's got that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Councilman Holly?
Yeah.
Old business. Department reports, Dr. Curley?
No.
Kevin?
I have several things to report on. As I referenced a moment ago, there was a natural gas leak in the area that you referenced around the police department. I'll let the chief in a minute speak as to what they found this afternoon as to the cause of that. Also, this afternoon, we received a mutual aid call and the fire department responded along with, I believe, one other city to a structured fire in the city of Kingston to assist them. The fire was more than what they could handle on their own. To let you know a couple of things that I've been working on with regard to the Department of Transportation, I have reached out to them with the assistance of Dr. Curley. We've put together a number of documents with regard to reimbursement of some of the prior grants we have also found and identified the document which references the higher match amount, or actually the lower amount for the city, higher number of funds that the Department of Transportation would put into transportation enhancement grant programs. I've reached out to them to inquire about that documentation, what would be required to get additional funding, and I'm awaiting a response from them. You had asked for an update at the last meeting with regard to the closures at the Baumgartner Road construction. I had intended on attending the regular weekly meeting this morning, but realized that they had called that off as a result of it being Veterans Day and the state offices being closed. So, I will be at that meeting next week and hopefully we'll have an update regarding that and when the road can reopen at that time. Also, I've reached out to the department to try and update with regard to the surface transportation funds the city has, what our current balance is, and what our timelines will be for utilizing the remainder of those funds which we have. I would also like to make you aware of the fact that the police department has made one promotion of a reserve officer. A decision was made today to promote Thomas Alberd to the position of patrolman, full time, and the golf course board also selected for a part-time position Ms. Stephanie Blum.
Questions? Still under department reports, Dr. Curley? Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief?
I was in, I've talked to me, what happened is that they were tearing down the old barber shop slash apartments across from PD corner right there, and apparently they didn't tap off the gas on and they got near start, cut it down, busted lines open, and they had some gas leakage, so we had to block off that whole area, including the police department. We had to divvy it, and so, but it should be, they told me I was there till 6:40. They thought they had it all done, tap off by 7 o'clock, so I haven't talked to anybody since, but when I did leave, they had one line already tap off and they were working the second one.
Contractor, they hit that?
Yeah. But I would tell you that the street park fire department did a good job coming out and giving us a hand, blocking off all the roads, getting cones off, and they did a really good job, so I was pleased with them. They did a really good job.
Is that a contractor, the T-Dax?
Yeah.
It's probably like a man T-Dax.
Still under department reports. Maria, do you have anything?
I do have something. I had Rose Fargo contact me about 520 Evelyn Drive. It's a house that's been empty for quite a long time, and they've offered it to us for renovation or demolition. And I've got with Bill Alexander and we went out there and we're looking at maybe having them transfer it to the IDB so we can sell it or tear it down. They're going to offer $7,500 either ways for the renovation or for the demolition.
What's that address?
520 Evelyn Drive. They're going to vote on it.
That's in Pine Hills, isn't it?
Right behind, we're at old Walmart. That's all.
Still under department reports, can you all give us any kind of an update? Is everything okay out there now?
Everything's good.
Okay. Thank you. Committee reports. The rate for Christmas parade?
Is coming up December 4th, so if anybody would like to help or you'd like to participate trying to get churches involved again this year, have them put some floats and anyway, getting everything geared up for it now, so you can get a hold, there's a website, you can go to the city website and it'll link you to the rate for Hammond website to register and you can contact the city officer, me or Randy Ellis if you want to volunteer.
Okay, committee reports still. We'll move on to the agenda. Discussing possibly accept a demolition bid for 502 Clifton Street, and it shouldn't be in everybody's packet, the bids that were received for that. They range from $6,200 to $40,675. Five bids came in and they were open. Dr. Curley and Angie and Maria opened those bids October 31st. We've budgeted, I think Maria has about $80,000 in her budget this year for demolition. This time, like always, we are spending more, we're waiting on taxes to come in, so if you all see fit to accept one of these, if you could, I will wait until Dr. Curley offer us a cash flow letter before we move forward with it.
So, you need a motion to accept the low bid?
Whichever bid, whatever you all want to do, low bid. That company, the low bid company was the same company that did some demolition, the old car wash out on Pine Ridge Road. They're not out there right now, are they? That's not the ones that get the cash flow, are they?
No.
They were.
They'll demo it.
But that's the company that did, that did demolition.
Maria, have we had good experience with them in the past?
Yes, yes, and they're certified license.
I'll make the motion that we accept the low bid and we'll have the demo work done once Dr. Curley gives his approval.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Ayler to accept the low bid, $6,200 for 502 Clifton Street, and a second is by Councilman Holly. Councilman Ayler? That's from Councilman Holly. Floor is open for questions or discussion.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Maria, did all these people bid on the same thing?
Yes, they did, and I talked to all of them. One that's really high, he's from out of town, and he has, he has a large business and large cost overhead as far as insurance costs. The other two are about in the range that I anticipated was about $15,000. I was really surprised that H&amp;H came in as low as they did on that building because it's a lot of block, it's very, it's very big even though it's a small lot. It's, it used to be an old store that was converted into apartments.
That's a lot of variance.
Yeah.
Through those five companies and, do we give them a set of description of the work to be done?
Yeah.
I mean, everybody's bidding on.
Yeah, it's the same, I request a bid. I give a call, email it, or fax it, however, or they come pick it up, and then I talk to them about it on the phone, too, about my expectations. They need to haul off all of the CME, they can't put it in the hole, they have to rip backfill it with clean dirt and seed it and straw it, and everything needs to go to certified landfill except the block.
Well, of course, we want to stay in Hammond, Long County, but the Hammond bids are almost three times that, so. And you tell us that they've done work before and we've had no trouble, so it's kind of hard to, unless somebody can tell me something different.
We've used them all except that five in, I've never used to have.
Thank you.
Is it, is it on the corner?
On the corner. Yeah, it's yellow, and it's got orchids around.
It's a little blue store, isn't it?
It used to be on the store.
It's bigger blue.
I think it's right across the street from Charles Chambers House.
Okay.
What happened at the lot, once it's cleaned up, is it ours?
No, we just assess and lean against it, and it'll remain in the owner's name until it transfers due to back taxes to the county or somebody buys it. It's the only property that goes with that building is the property it sits on. Everything around it belongs to CT Enterprises, the little red house and the property all around it.
Do they know we're turning it down, the owners of the property?
Oh, yeah. I'm talking to them.
Mayor, one more thing. You tear that down, and if you could sell it tomorrow, would it, would that lot like that bring 6,200?
At that price, it might. It would be worth it to the person that owns the property all the way around it. Yeah, I think so. I was really anticipating it to be three times that much, as big as it is.
Is it, is it, is it a building, can you build back on it, is it big enough?
No, it would have to be integrated into the surrounding parcel. It's too small for anything.
So, if they're not interested, what happens? We just hold it forever?
It'll just sit there until the county takes it over and then they'll surplus it like they do these other parcels.
Or we take it.
What? I thought the lady from the planning commission said if you had the property, you can't tell them they can't build back if they build a lot. What's the lady's name that?
Yeah, you can't, you know, that property is just so small.
Oh, yeah, I understand, but that was the issue we've been around the end of, remember, is that people were like, why go in and do anything, you know, if it needs to be tore down or anything, because you can't do that to the property, so let everybody have a back taxes and tear it down. So, we, before you got on council, we just summed this as a, we're setting aside money, but we know that we don't plan on getting back because of what's been in the past. Right or wrong, we've got to know what we're doing in the past.
Sometimes we don't, most of the times we don't, but we have had recoveries of our lease.
Just to make the world a little better place.
But maybe we wind up having to maintain it.
Sometimes, we know, the good thing, you know, Mr. Sylvie, we, I know we forgave a lien on a piece of property and we've had property owners come over and take ownership of the property, we forgive, and then they maintain it. It looks really nice, but that's about, in my opinion, the best we can do, but right now, it just, as it stands right now, it just takes the property values down, 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 and it's an eyesore and it's a safety hazard.
It is, because vagrants have been getting in it and they, you know, they sleep in, especially this time of year, and it's not work fixing up, and it's really not worth tearing down. And the best you can hope to get out of it is just another, you know, low rent apartment that's just going to be problematic.
Well, I've seen it, and you're doing the right thing, get the toy back.
It's been about seven or eight years coming.
It'd just be nice if we could make it unhoned or.
Yeah.
Instead of bust out and pay for it with tax breaks.
Can we burn them?
That's not cheap, that's just.
Can we burn buildings like that?
Well, the most of that building is blocked, but no, we can't. The EPA, the monthless burn.
Floor is still open for questions or discussion. Okay, call the roll.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ken Minett?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
Discussing possibly approve a grant for the Hammond Library. This grant was applied for and they were awarded the grant. They want to use TBA monies that they, that they still have remaining to, for their portion of the match. Am I correct, Dr. Curley? But it was only, it was presented to us last week, they want to use it for computers, and it was presented to us last week, we just bumped it to this week.
I make a motion there first.
Motion by Councilman Mead and second by Councilman Best. Councilman Mead?
No, sir.
Councilman Best. Floor is open for questions.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Mei?
Yes.
Ken Minett?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
Next item was also pushed to this week, discussing possibly approve purchasing new cameras for the police department as a drug fund. I think Chief Hidle let us know last week this was an upgrade thing that you, that you wanted to do, and it was, tell me the cost again.
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. As a drug fund?
Yeah.
It's also in your package.
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Ayler, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Wright. Councilman Ayler?
Chief, what are these, are these the cameras that mount on the dashes of the patrol cars? Is that what?
These are served, cameras actually mounted in the console. When you see a failure system, lens part is served down there. That's what we're placing down there, so.
What, does it produce a higher quality and better?
Well, they're not going to work on phase ones anymore without me, and we can't get any more cars to read on them, they're basically useless after, maybe two, three, six months, but they're not going to be able to work on like that. So, we're giving you an option, go ahead, trade them in, get them all set for the cost from there, and replace all the phase ones to phase threes, and it'll be in good shape for another six, seven years until we have that bid again.
So, what you have now is basically obsolete?
Yes.
Thanks.
It's going to become obsolete.
Councilman Wright?
No.
Floor is open for questions or discussion.
I noticed it's a quote, we're going to take bears off.
That's what I didn't hear.
Talking to Dr. Williams, I guess we've already been through this company, where we're buying stuff from, where it's replaceable, we're going to buy, we replace it for upgrades. So, we still, we've been over certain parts, still want to bid.
No, I think I remember what he said, pretty sure.
I think we, there's other things that's in the way, I believe, that probably got ongoing services and stuff like that.
Is there anybody else that does this that you know of around here?
Around here?
Well.
I mean, you can start a whole new system if you want.
I mean, you can start a whole new system if you want, uh, but you have to buy a whole new server, we can have at least for fifteen cameras, and I just had to upgrade that server last year, so we can cover our sixteen cameras, so that was thirteen thousand dollars, the server alone, when we first bought it, it was seven, I think, probably around thirty thousand for the server, that's what the video comes into the evidence room and log, basically logs with that server and then it downloads to the CD and restores the evidence, so you can go to another company, but you'd be starting from phase brick one, and we already got a house built right now.
So you're, you're saying, chief, we switch vendors, then everything can be gone with?
Well, yeah, you'll have two different, two different servers, two different systems, and I mean, I know that, I've heard, I know one agency's done that, the county did, but they spent thousands of dollars to change over them.
It's like switching from a PC to a Mac, basically, you have to change the whole system.
And this system we have now, with our body cameras, they're fixing to interact with the system also, it'll download into the server, so, you know, I'd have to restructure, restart over again, and what do you do with the system you got now, and you'd have to try and sell it, so it's been a good system, you know, it's just that like any technology, after so many years, uh, it's gonna become obsolete, you know, we've already had to upgrade our software last year, the software we use for our computer computers in our office, we had to upgrade, you know, so it's this technology, yeah, it's how it's gonna be, but we gotta maintain it because of course this is now used to our, to our system, to our, to our quality of evidence, you know, the cases, and it's also been helpful for any kind of lawsuits or any type of complaints that come in, uh, the system works really well, very clear, and it will be clearer too, I mean, it's gonna be a better quality video coming out, so, but I've been real happy with the system, it's been looking really good, we had the meeting that's in this year, we've worked it out.
Floor's still open. Okay, call rollers.
Chris Harriman?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
Uh, update on the annexation efforts in Midtown, Kevin, do you have anything on that?
Just to let you know where we stand, I hope you have more information than what we have at this point in time, but uh, we pulled some of the background documents with regard to the annexation, I've been in touch with Deputy Director at TML to try and get some clarity on the two state statutes that come into play with regard to the annexation, just to let you know, one of the state statutes uh, has a sunset provision, um, of May of twenty fifteen, so there's one set of uh, rules and regulations that are in place currently and extend until May, and then uh, assuming that the General Assembly doesn't make more changes to annexation law, then the other part of the statute would begin to become effective in May, although most people feel that there will be different changes that will take place during this session, so we're really not sure exactly what the situation will become may. Also, um, because this particular area was not part of the city's UGV when it was adopted countywide, we also have the uh, public chapter eleven oh one statutes that come into play as well, um, so we're trying to sort through all of those and hopefully we'll have more information for you in the coming couple of weeks.
Okay. Anybody else have anything on that? Okay. Next item, discuss and possibly approve an access authorization for removal under the circula from form for Mead West Corporation, uh, I think, uh, I think I had this put on there just because it was asking me to sign an adoption, um, this is a part of the cleanup done at the paper mill, and uh, circula is, circula is a kind of, is a set of guidelines that, that uh, the government has to go by when they do any type of cleanup like this, circula, uh, the public meetings and things like that, but what they wanna do is do some core drilling, I believe, down at, uh, is it Riverfront Park, is that right, Kevin, how you understand it, Buddy?
There's two separate parcels in that area, the park parcel and then the soccer field parcel.
Okay. Do you, okay, so Buddy, do you see any reason why we shouldn't do it?
Exactly what are you doing?
Authorizing them to come in and start the cleanup.
And how, Buddy, how does Mead, I, I know Mead's uh, probably gonna pay, uh, how do they fit into this, this item here?
Mead and EPA got together along with us and they came to a settlement, who's responsible for cleaning up the site, EPA, Mead made their case that they would clean up anything that they did within their forty or fifty years they were here, and identified all of that, EPA brought that and said they would be responsible for cleaning the rest of it, said the other companies that did the other collision are bankrupt.
And, and one of the reasons I'm asking, um, I have a, I have a financial relationship with Mead, does that play any part in what we're doing, Buddy?
No. This is, this is Mead West Faco.
That's the one I have?
They merged several years ago, but this, this was part of the agreement between them and EPA, and they're just asking our commission to access the property to do the work, and we have no liability, so, this is just saying.
Well, I, I'd give a disclaimer anyway, whoever you.
We've already got.
No, I'm coming at him.
Oh.
I, I just would give a disclaimer.
How do you want to say?
I would just say that you, that you might, that you may have a financial interest or something, or just pass, I don't know.
I would say.
Yeah, okay.
You don't own the whole cut.
Any other questions or discussion? You know, about when they said, I know this was supposed to be about five years for the total cleanup to be finished, it's been fast tracked and they're still, it's, it's gonna happen pretty quick, right?
Yeah, there, there was a delay in, in the, in the contract between EPA and West Faco, and they couldn't get, it was a law, they couldn't get their heads together, and it was supposed to be approved back in September, and it just now through, so they said if they could, if it would have been approved in September, they would be finished in the spring of twenty fifteen, so it may be a little, maybe the summer.
At some point, we need to sit down and discuss too, if we wanna try and uh, secure that land in our name, however, I know, I know the Mead property, I think, will be pretty easy, they owe us a lot of money, uh, and they, they've stated on the phone to Mead that they would, or not them, but uh, Donahue said that he would be, he would be willing to give us that property, there's some more, there's another fifteen acre parcel that we would, that we would need to talk about if uh, maybe something can be worked out there.
Yeah, but what we're approving tonight is making sure that you're staying in compliance with the circle law, and that's why it's on our properties, and that's why we're letting them do groundwater monitoring, soil sampling, and all that stuff, doesn't really, I mean, it has something to do with the cleanup efforts, but this isn't authorizing them to clean up, this is authorizing them to do the same thing.
That's right. Any more questions? Call rollers. Whoa, wait.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Councilman Taylor, a second by Councilman Best. Get that back. Is there any discussion? Call rollers.
Chris Harriman?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
Last item on the agenda is discuss and possibly approve Rome Parks Foundation to use the building next to the annex for their fundraiser on November twenty-second, they uh, contacted me, Jen Slager contacted me and asked if, if uh, they could do that again this year, they did it, I think, back in March or April or May, they did a concert at the Princess for a fundraiser for their foundation, uh, their foundation raises money and does something with the school system, they used, I think, two, a couple of our buildings, but they'd sold, the annex, of course, is sold, and so they're asking if they can have access and use the three-story building, the bottom floor, uh, on November twenty-second for four or five hours, starting at six o'clock P.M.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Wright, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Taylor, Councilman Wright?
How do we, how do we handle liability responsibility?
There is a disclaimer form floating around somewhere that they said, yeah, I don't know if Bobby May had that or you do, okay, Angie said she hasn't. Councilman Taylor?
Is there any kind of formal written agreement that they have to sign regarding damages or anything, or cleanup or anything like that, like a one-day lease agreement, do we have anything like that?
There's a, I don't know if that's in the disclaimer, I mean, the uh, the form or uh, I know that protects us legally if somebody fell down and got hurt. But what was your question on that?
Uh, yeah, regarding, you know, how they leave the, how they leave the space after they're done with it, that kind of thing, I know we never had a problem with it in the past, I'm just saying. All right, either way, it's all right.
Is, make sure I understand this, is, is those our buildings or they want to industrial?
They belong to the industrial board, but uh, the industrial board turned around and leased them back to us, uh, for this type of stuff and to, it might have been over it, you know, if the roof leaks, what are they gonna do and uh?
Man, we probably need to get a form like, uh, Councilman Taylor's talking about done, so that, if, and if something did happen with it. Well, it may not be necessary in this one, I'm talking about the future.
I agree. Yeah, I agree too, just that they agree to leave it in the same shape as they got it in, that type of thing? Okay. Do you have a motion here? Floor's still open for discussion. Call rollers.
Chris Harriman?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Wright, we're gonna have a workshop next week.
It's up to council, they normally do, but.
We, we probably, we probably should, I know we're gonna, we probably, we're gonna be limited on meeting time in the rest of this month after that, and then December with the holidays, with Christmas.
What would be the major?
I don't, Kevin, do you think they can come down and talk to us that quick or we didn't put it off?
Let me check and see, I know he said he was gonna be uh, in Harriman giving, I think, some compliance reviews at HUB next week, I'm not sure what days those are gonna be, but I'll talk to him.
Okay, we'll stand by then, um, cause it would be Tuesday night, six o'clock.
Well, we've got some issues and things that we need, really, don't we, that we need to be discussing along.
Probably.
You know, we got, we got some uh, changes to the charter.
Yeah.
We might wanna, you know, top some, cause that's gonna come on pretty fast, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's some corrections and then, you know, I don't know, till we get into it, we might.
Okay.
Not change the charter.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion to waive the general rule, motion by Councilman Taylor is a second by Councilman Holly, all in favor of waiving the general rule, please vote with aye, any opposed likewise, um, due to the constraints of time of the calendar, there was a, there was a, there is an appointment on the industrial board that has expired, and I would like to ask for the uh, board member, Jamie Russell, be reappointed to the industrial board, um, if she so agrees. Motion by Councilman Best, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wright, Councilman Best. Councilman Wright?
No.
Floor's open for question or discussion. She was put on here about a year ago, that's why it slipped past us, she filled a vacant spot and uh, I'll call and confirm that she was willing to reset. Call rollers.
Chris Harriman?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
We have a grand opening, I believe it's, it's Monday at nine o'clock, uh, at the bakery, the new bakery down there, um, so if you can be there at nine o'clock Monday, I believe that's it, uh, and also, don't forget, the December fourth is the uh, Christmas parade, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.